Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council Meeting of Thursday, November 9th. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Randy Allison, followed by the pledging of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come tonight with the events of this week on our mind. Lord, the tragic deaths, Lord, the violence that we've experienced again as a community. Father, we lift up Nicholas Corita, our police officer who was wounded in the line of duty. Lord, we pray for his recovery, his quick recovery, Lord. We pray for you to be with him and his family, Lord God. And we pray for all our officers, because we know, Lord, every time they show up for work and put on the uniform and head out to the streets, they face the ever-present and ever-real possibility of putting their lives on the line. It's not just a cliche, it's not just a thing to say, it's a reality, and we're reminded of it at these times. Lord, there are protection, but there also are shock absorbers in life. Lord, they go out and face the things that we're not prepared to face, and the things we're not trained to face, and the things that many of us don't want to face, and they do it for us. And we ask for your protection, as always, Lord, upon them and their lives and their families. Lord, we're also mindful of the life that was lost, Lord, that created this whole emergency, Lord God, and everything that transpired after it. We pray for the family and young children left behind by Shawn Graham. Lord, we pray that you strengthen them and be with them at this time. I think of the words that were quoted in the newspaper by Captain Miller, that he always found Shawn Graham to be a pleasant one to talk to. He was always decent and polite. Lord, help us not to judge in these situations as a community. And, Lord, strengthen us that we can have the resolve and the commitment and compassion to get outside of our walls as a city government, to do everything that each one of us can to promote brotherhood, compassion for each other, love, Lord God, and to get people to learn to know each other, to not be put aside by barriers of any kind, racial or socio-economic, whatever keeps us apart, Lord. We want to break this cycle of violence, cycle of separation, and we pray for your help, and ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the next item on their agenda is approval of City Council Meeting minutes dated October 26, 2017. Can I have a motion and second to approve those minutes?
No move.
Second. Hearing motion and second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are minutes are approved. Next item is limited courtesy of the floor. We have had no request for that this evening, which allows us to move on to the next item, which is appointments. We have two mayoral appointments this evening to the Williamsport Civil Service Commission. One reappointment for Jeff Reader and another for Harold Anthony. Can I have a motion and a second to approve that reappointment and the appointment?
No move.
Second.
Hearing motion and second. Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present two fine individuals that have served this city with distinction. First of all, Butch Anthony, who's been one of the finest fire chiefs in the city's history, and we have Jeff Reader, who is actually involved in Citizens Corps. He's the coordinator for that and has served the city with distinction for many, many years. Both individuals have worked very hard to support this city, and I'm sure that they would do a fine job in this new capacity. Also, at this time, I'd like to thank publicly Karen Miller, who served on the Civil Service Board for many, many years. She did a fine job. She decided to do some other things. And also, I'd like to thank Charles Holmes, who continues to serve on this board with distinction, and he's done a fine job as well, so I believe we have a great team in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions? First, were the reappointments and appointments referred to Council Committee?
Yes.
Public Safety?
Public Safety.
Safety. So, Mr. Smith, report from Public Safety.
Yes, we did interview these two appointments to the Civil Service Commission, and Jeff Reader, as it was pointed out, has done an outstanding job over the last few years with Citizens Corps and also worked with the Neighborhood Watch. And he's also been assisting at certain times with the Civil Service Commission. We felt that he will be a great asset to that commission. Harold Anthony, better known as Butch Anthony, 422 Edwin Street, was a former fire chief with the city, and he has been very involved over the years with the Fire Department, and he's also assisted recently in the Civil Service Commission. When we talked with Butch Anthony, one of the things that he discussed with us is he really has his heart into the fire service, and he enjoys being a mentor to new firemen. And we do have new firemen that have joined the department within the last year or so. So, he really has his heart in it, and they both said that they will attend the meetings and they will be very involved in the Civil Service Commission. Obviously, we don't take a vote. We do it by consensus, and all three members have sent it to, will send it to council with a positive recommendation for their appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Comments or questions from others on council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the reappointment and the appointment.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those appointments are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any swearing in? Mrs. Frank?
No, they're both reappointed.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda then is an ordinance enacting a code of ordinance for the city. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please, in first reading.
An ordinance enacting a code of ordinances for the city of Williamsport revising, amending, restating, codifying, and compiling certain existing general ordinances of the political subdivision dealing with subjects embraced in such code of ordinance.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance in first reading, please?
No move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Smith, how are you this evening?
I am fine. Good evening, President Williamson and members of council. This is an annual process that you're familiar with, having gone through it a couple of times, a little bit of a different twist. This is a new vendor, and they have done more of an elaborate recodification, which I think is significant. I think you all probably have gotten new books, or if you didn't, you at least have one available to you. And I think special kudos should go out to the city clerk for her efforts in doing this.
Thank you, and I'll also thank her on behalf of council for the work of shepherding this through the process, both in researching the possible vendors, helping choose the best one available to us, and then working closely with them to make sure it was completed in a timely fashion, and as far as I can tell, so far, well-executed. So, thank you, Mrs. Frank.
You're welcome.
Comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, can first read?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that ordinance is approved in first reading. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance of the city of Williamsport and the county repealing Chapter III of the Code. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Ordinance of the city of Williamsport, Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, repealing Part III, Article 301 of the city code, Board of Revision of Taxes and Appeals and replacing same with a local tax hearing officer appeals process.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance in first reading?
No move.
Second.
Hearing motion and second. Mr. Grimes, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you. In front of you is a change to our ordinance to repeal our current Board of Revision of Taxes and Repeals and replace it with a tax hearing officer. This is part of a comprehensive review that we've now almost completed of our tax ordinances and rules and regulations. And the reason why we're suggesting this change is it's almost an outdated method, what we currently have. We have to find three volunteers in the city who are willing to sit on a tax appeals board, and they have to make decisions on legality of whether a tax was enforced and properly applied on a taxpayer. Problem with that is it's hard to find people that are expert enough in the law and the taxes to sit on that board to make a decision that's going to hold up in court, because the next, pretty much any good lawyer, if three volunteers make a decision on this, any good lawyer is going to find a reason to be able to appeal that to the county court. In the other case, if we use a tax hearing officer, which is more common in the state now, then that's somebody who has the legal and the tax expertise to go through the hearing and make a sound legal decision on whether the tax was applied properly, and then could write a decision on that that would probably have some sort of legal standing if it was challenged. And I'll just take you through a few of the changes that would occur in this. Council would have to appoint that tax hearing officer, and you would also have to appoint an alternate. That officer would not have the ability or discretion to evade penalty or interest. It fixes a lot of our current problems with just how outdated our ordinance was with times for appeals, where you can appeal, how you can appeal, those sort of items. And then, we've put in here that the technical rules of evidence will not be applicable. That can be changed, but the reason for that is it's a much quicker and easier method. If we have to go through discovery and everything else, then it's a lot more time for a tax hearing officer that the city would have to pay for in those cases. So, that saves us some time and some money there. And then, we've also added to the first version that you've guys received that, at the discretion of the hearing officer, the hearing may take place or witnesses may appear from remote locations. And the purpose of that, if it's something that's pretty simple or standard, then if we have a hearing officer that's out of Philly or Harrisburg or somewhere else, and maybe a company that's out of Pittsburgh or Erie, then we could still hold the meeting in City Hall, but both tax hearing officer and any witnesses or other parties can appear remotely through Skype or another sort of meeting, online meeting. And I can certainly answer any questions about this. There's a lot of hearing officers that we could use in the state, and I'll certainly present some to council if this gets passed. The woman who actually helped me, the law firm, with these changes is a hearing officer for many of the larger tax collection places in the state, including York Adams Tax Bureau, and she would certainly be a good choice, since she understands all of our ordinances now going through it with me.
Thank you. And was this reviewed by Finance?
Yes, it was.
All right. Ms. Mealy.
Finance did review this and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. As we discussed in Finance Committee, this is effectively pretty well-cost neutral for the city. We will have to hire, we'll have to pay a tax hearing officer, but on the other hand, we would have to pay legal counsel for either the Treasurer's Office or our current tax board, because we, you know, our solicitors can only represent one or the other. So, pretty much, you know, there shouldn't be much more cost, and we do have a far more effective, or potentially a far more effective and knowledgeable person making these decisions so that ideally, we won't then go to an appeal process from this point forward. So, with all of that settled, I'll defer to the members of the committee, but that was the most salient point to me in discussing the ordinance, that. Kudos to Nick and whoever put these items together, because they're nicely put together, and it's good to be getting all of these, the upcoming three ordinances, in the line with current standards and current law.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Allison.
I also compliment Nick for the hard work he's done on this and the other two ordinances, and his continuing effort to make that office more efficient and make more money for the city legally. And just the, he just is really diligent at researching what's on the cutting edge of taxation and Treasurer's job, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And grateful for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance of the city of Williamsport amending Article 349. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance, ordinance of the city of Williamsport, Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, amending Part III Licensing and Taxation Code, Article 349 Business Privilege Tax of the city code, to impose an annual license fee of $10 to remove an execution provision that has been deemed unconstitutional, to increase time in which an appeal may be filed, to change appeal procedure to review by hearing officer, to add cost of enforcement to amounts due from the delinquent taxpayers, to remove requirement to file appeal in order to make a payment under protest, and to clarify certain enforcement procedures to impose fines.
Thank you. I love really long titles. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance in first reading?
No move. Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Grimes?
Reason for the long title was it's a lot cheaper to advertise if we do all the changes in one as opposed to multiple. I'll just take you through the changes. This is changes to our business privilege ordinance, again, as part of this review that we've now almost completed. I'll start on the third whereas. That changes the annual business registration fee, the license fee, from $2 to $10. We have to be very careful that we don't change the scope or the tax rate of this tax, or else we can lose the tax altogether. The reason why we can change the license fee is because that's supposed to cover administrative costs, as you can assume since the '70s, when this was set at $2. Administrative costs have changed drastically, but the license fee has never been updated. So, this changes it from $2 to $10, which is still the cheapest that I've found in about any municipality that collects business privilege tax. I've seen them upwards of over $100 in certain places. But there was nobody that was doing $2 like we were. The second whereas gets rid of the broker exclusion. It's something that's in our ordinances. It's been deemed unconstitutional. The Pennsylvania Constitution, State Constitution says, has a uniformity clause that we have to tax everybody uniformly unless specifically identified in the Constitution, and this does not allow for us to exclude brokers from the tax. The next whereas is just changing the time period for an appeal. We now have to give 90 days according to the law. We had 30 days in our ordinance. It also changes to a local tax hearing officer, which is what you just approved. This also removes the requirement that a taxpayer must file an appeal of assessment in order to make a payment under protest, which also is not allowed to require them to do that. It also allows us to add cost of collections when a taxpayer is delinquent, especially when we have to bring suit against them. So, if we do something internally and have filing fees or lawyer cost or certified letters, anything like that, we can charge that back to the taxpayer, if you guys would approve a document that details what those costs are. And then, the last whereas is just saying that we don't desire to modify the scope or the measure of the business privilege tax again, because we're not allowed to do that by law. So, the measure and the scope is going to stay the same, we're just cleaning up other parts of the ordinance. And the reason why you've had an updated version of this since Finance's, the new ordinance book, whether I had an old page or the formatting just changed, is there is a few lines where we said delete this word or delete this sentence, and it was in a different spot in the new book we got last week. So, we've just changed some of those details.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance reviewed this item as well and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. The $2 to $10, you know, change is not going to, you know, put us firmly in the black or anything, but every little bit does help, and it's nice to know that we'll be covering our costs down in the Treasurer's Department on this item, rather than not covering much of anything. So, Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance of the city of Williamsport amending Article 333. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance of the city of Williamsport, Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, amending Part III, Article 333 of the city code, mercantile license tax to increase annual license fee, correct typographical errors, increase time in which an appeal may be filed, change appeal procedures to review by hearing officer, add cost of collection to amounts due from the delinquent taxpayers, remove requirement to file appeal in order to make payment under protest, and to permit certain reinforcement procedures to also proceed by civil means resulting in civil fine.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance in first reading?
No move. Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Grimes?
This is very similar to the last ordinance changes that you just reviewed. Our business privilege and mercantile tax ordinances are two separate ordinances, so we have to make changes to both. The mercantile tax ordinance did not have a broker exclusion, so we didn't have to remove that. There was a typographical error in this ordinance. It was just a line that was repeated during some recodification. It wasn't in the original ordinance, but we just deleted that error. And one thing I forgot to mention with the last one is it allows us, if we have to pursue somebody legally, to not only use the county court through a civil complaint, but we could also go to the magistrate for a, sort of like a quasi-criminal complaint if we want to, which has certain benefits to it. It's cheaper, usually a little faster, a little easier for enforcement. So, there's benefits, but it allows us to do either one, whichever one suits us best.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance doesn't have a whole lot more to offer on that. Finance also forwarded this item to the full body of council with a positive recommendation and observation that it will be a little better for the bottom line than if we didn't have it, so.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that ordinance is also approved in first reading. Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance, again, in first reading, for the 44th Year Community Development Budget. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance, 44th Year, 2018, Community Development Budget.
Thank you, and I suppose we should probably read a total, if you would.
The total is $1,192,244.
Thank you.
Events, yes.
That's fine. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance in first reading?
No move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mrs. Young, how are you?
Good, thanks. This is our budget for the city's 2018 Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds, and these are the programs that are funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we're basing our 2018 allocations on the actual amount of funds that we were awarded in 2017. So, we're estimating in that in 2018, we'll receive $937,790 in Community Development Block Grant Funds, or CDBG, $199,454 in home program funds, $5,000 in CDBG program income, and $50,000 in home program income. And the proposed expenditures include public facilities and improvements, which are funded entirely with CDBG funds. And we funded the street reconstruction activity in the amount of $324,199. And that work will include curbing and sidewalk improvements, landscaping, drainage for the following streets, Second Avenue, Chestnut Street, Almond Street, Park Avenue, Kraus Avenue, and Mount Carmel Street. We're also proposing to fund the removal of architectural barriers for $75,000. This activity reconstructs the curb ramps on various streets throughout the city, and we're proposing to fund the Waze Garden Restoration Project in the amount of $50,000. This project was funded with $70,000 of prior-year CDBG funds, and other funding sources include Pennsylvania DCNR, Lycoming County, and private funding. That scope of work includes landscape and site improvements, garden structures, benches, a pavilion, and an event lawn. The Walnut Street Fire Station Rehab Activity will be funded for $120,000. That work includes the replacement of six-engine bay doors, the replacement of the original diesel-powered generator, and the replacement of all exterior entry doors and the installation of a video monitoring system. And finally, in public facilities, we have public facilities program delivery in the amount of $32,667. Moving on to public services, which is also funded exclusively with CDBG, we're proposing to fund the Lycoming County SPCA, $5,000 for its voucher program toward a neuter or spay for the pets of low-income residents, and also to provide microchips for pet identification. We're proposing to fund Fire Tree Place in the amount of $6,000 for an after-school program. Those funds will be used to offset the wages of trained counselors who will work directly with youth in the after-school program. And if the funding for the SPCA and Fire Tree Place are approved, we'll enter into a subrecipient agreement with each organization in 2018. We're funding public services program delivery in the amount of $3,232. Moving on to housing rehabilitation and preservation, we're funding the owner-occupied single-family housing rehab activity with $30,000 of CDBG funds, $39,998 of home funds. Our handicapped accessibility rehab will be funded with $10,000 of CDBG funds, and we're proposing the share-to-budget $30,000 of CDBG funds for exterior property improvements and historic preservation of homes in the historic district. And this is actually a program that has been funded in the past, but it was quite a while ago. I think 2006 was the last year that we funded that program. And it will require a 50% cash match from the owner, and we're proposing a maximum of $5,000 of funding per project. There will be a total of $171,975 allocated to the housing rehab program delivery line item. For home buyer assistance activities, we've budgeted $20,000 in home funds. These are funds that will provide gap financing to eligible homeowners, or home buyers, excuse me. And then, the city is required to reserve 15% of its home allocation for distribution to a certified housing development organization or a CHODO. CHODO funds are typically used toward the cost of the construction of new homes. The city will allocate $29,918 to fund a project undertaken by one of the city's two certified CHODOs, either Lycoming Neighborhood Development Corporation or Greater Lycoming Habitat for Humanity. $20,000 of CDBG funds will be allocated for code enforcement activities that are taking place in established code enforcement areas, which are also low-income areas. A total of $15,000 of CDBG funds will be allocated for the blight-elimination activity. This activity is for the demolition of properties determined by the codes department to be blighted. The blight-elimination program delivery line item will be budgeted in the amount of $1,752. Both of the CDBG and home programs are subject to administrative caps. Program administration will be funded with CDBG funds in the amount of $187,558. Home program administration will be funded for $19,945, and both of these budget amounts do adhere to the cap requirements. The total budget for both the CDBG and home programs, including program income, is $1,192,244. And I do want to note that you did receive a page with some minor corrections to the program delivery and administration page of the budget. Some totals were calculated incorrectly. It was actually under legal fees, and I got a call from Norm Lubin, who, right away, wanted to know whether that was a mistake or whether it was correct, and those figures don't have any bearing on the line items that are in the budget. They were simply totals that were miscalculated. I also want to mention that the 2018 Annual Action Plan, which includes narrative information about these activities, will be presented to City Council for approval at the next meeting on November 21st. The 2018 Community Development Budget was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Young.
Yes, the Finance Committee did review this and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We discussed a handful of items. Obviously, the Obviously, the Fire Tree Place after-school program funding is somewhat new this year. There will be, as we've received a report from the SPCA annually, there will also be a report from Fire Tree Place. That's simply a part, they have to, it's actually a part of our reporting to CDBG. So, you know, we will have information to see how successful the use of the funds has been moving forward. The pot of money for historic rehabilitation, which is new this year after a 10-year absence, is, I asked some questions primarily about whether, A, whether or not the funding had income limits on it, because a lot of CDBG funding is income limited. The funding within the historic district will not be limited by income of the owner of the structure or the residents of the structure. However, it will be determined predicated on sort of greatest need. These will be funds that will be used to fix up code-deficient homes in the historic district, and the homes that are most deficient will have the greatest priority in terms of receiving the funding. So there will be a level of oversight there. It won't simply be sort of a first-come, first-served basis, was my understanding. The one question I did have that I didn't ask Stephanie in the Finance meeting is, were our CDBG and home funds reduced in 2017? I could not remember.
They were. Well, actually, home was increased. CDBG was decreased by about 7,500, I believe, and home was increased by about 6,000.
Okay, so we were almost neutral. Are we anticipating a decrease in 2018 since?
I'm anticipating that there will be a decrease. You know, the word is that the programs may be eliminated entirely. There's always been those rumors, though, but it's, I can't say for sure, but those rumors have always circulated, and we've always ended up having not a problem. We've had a reduction, but nothing that indicates that the program will be eliminated entirely.
Yeah, we'd be pretty well done for if we eliminated all this. There go the streets. And then my follow-up question is, I'm assuming that certain of these activities won't be undertaken until we know for sure that we are receiving the funding, which, to my recollection, won't happen until next August, correct?
Right, right.
And so I'm assuming in particular that the historic rehabilitation item is probably, we're probably going to wait to roll that out until after we certainly know the funding, and the same with the streets, right?
Right, and you never know when you're going to receive the funding. It really depends on the year. Sometimes we get it as early as April, other times we get it as late as October. It never seems to be a routine, standard sort of timeline, so we try to work around that as best we can.
Yeah.
That's the headline of the evening. Mrs. Young indicates Washington is unpredictable.
I'm clairvoyant.
With that in mind, the only other item we discussed is that in addition to the historic rehabilitation line item in this year's CDBG budget, we also have $225,000 in fair funds that will be available. We haven't ironed out all the details in the city yet, but that will be available for historic rehab, not only in the district, but outside the district on historic properties. So that's good news in terms of keeping our historic assets in good condition. It's not a lot of money, but a little bit can help. And with all of that noted, Finance forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none. I guess I would just say thank you, as always, for both putting the overarching plan together and then how to implement it within a budgetary framework. It's nice that the total amount here didn't go down as much as it seems to every year. We've, for better or worse, become heavily reliant on these funds to do things to benefit some areas of our community that really need help. And I think out of your office, we've done a lot of things over a number of years to spread the funding in an efficient way so that it touches many aspects of our city. And I think there's some creative, new creativity reflected in this particular year budget to accomplish that, so thanks for that work.
Thank you, thanks.
If there are no other comments or questions, Ms. Frank on the ordinance in first reading.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that ordinance is approved in first reading. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve a table, transfer of operations and transition agreement for stormwater control system, which is on the table. And so for us to be able to consider that, as we've done the last couple of weeks, I will ask to entertain a motion to remove that item from the table. Is there a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second. There's not comments or questions. Ms. Frank on the motion to remove the transfer resolution from the table.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and so that is now up for discussion. And I think I want to start, it's already, of course, been presented by the administration and was tabled, oh, I don't know, a couple of months ago. And so let me start by saying, I have been involved in a number of conversations, both in and outside city government, on kind of helping us to make sure that we had the items in place to be able to get us across the finish line. First, let me recognize the work, especially that members of Public Works Committee have done over the last three years, I think it is. Mr. Smith is chair, Ms. Novia, and Ms. Katz in particular, working with the Water and Sanitary Authority and their staffs to be able to get us all the way, almost all the way there. And in every case, there are always some extra things to accomplish at the very end as we're trying to dot the i's and cross the t's. And so I, as a result of those conversations, I've spent the last couple of weeks working with our solicitor, Mr. Smith, to come up with a number of amendments that, in what I'll call my listening tour, I've heard concerns raised by members of council, I've heard concerns raised by members of the administration, I've heard concerns raised by the general public and people associated with the authorities. And have several proposals that have circulated to members of council for their consideration tonight. I will probably take those, I believe, in three parts, if I have counted correctly. One is kind of an overarching part that I will describe. And do I need to read the changes for the large, including the larger side of changes?
Your discretion, but I don't think it's required because it was part of the pact.
Okay, so the first part will be the item that I circulated to all members of council and to the administration that has a number of changes, and I'll make a motion, and then, assuming there's a second, go ahead and describe without reading those changes. The second will be a further change to clarify one particular clause related to indemnification. And then finally, a change that resulted from some feedback that I got once I circulated the original proposals from zoning codes and city engineer. And I think their input was very useful as well. So I'll make a motion based on what I circulated prior, and then I'll describe them a little bit if there's a second. So moved, is that detailed enough? Okay.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second. So let me kind of outline what those changes are. In the version that all members of council have, one of the things we've done is to clarify that the assets are being conveyed in an as-is condition without warranty, that the authority will be assuming operational responsibility for maintaining the system defined as the stormwater system, that our approval and the authority's approval, which they have not reviewed these changes, and so, you know, they will review them and give us our feedback, that either side's approval is conditional on review and approval of the Army Corps of Engineers, that's responding to concerns that we heard from the administration. Probably one of the more substantive changes that I want to make sure is clarified is paragraph four, and I'll read it in particular. It's titled "Assumption of Debt." And what it says is, "The authority agrees to assume the city's debt directly related to the system in an amount to be determined by further review and agreement, but in no event to exceed $675,000." Let me clarify where we are on that particular item. As a result of concerns raised by the administration, and myself and other members of council taking those concerns to members of the authority, in theory, it was agreed, not through formal action, but through those discussions, it was agreed that upgrades to the stormwater system that are under primarily Church Street and Willis Street, no, William Street, thank you, that occurred around the time of development of primarily Kohl's, would, are upgrades to the system that took on debt. Now, final numbers still need to be determined because that involves a lot of due diligence, looking at drawings and looking at work orders and that sort of thing. But based on the numbers that I worked to identify with, making requests of the administration, we knew that the max number probably there is about $675,000. It probably will end up being less, but we essentially wanted to keep moving forward while we continue to have those discussions on what the final number would have. And so what this says is, we will essentially continue to discuss what the final number should be by doing, everybody doing due diligence on that number. In no way does it commit the authority, one, they haven't agreed to it, but two, would it commit the authority to that number of $675,000? I want to be clear of that. Nobody's making a final commitment here. It is simply a commitment to continue to explore tying the debt associated with replacing storm sewer pipes as part of that project under the city's streets, and having the transfer of those pipes to the authority go along with the transfer of associated debt as agreed to in the future, even after this agreement is signed by both parties, by both parties. And so to be very clear then, our agreement to this tonight is not bringing cash into the city. It would be to propose, of course, to the authority, for their approval as well, to continue discussions of transferring responsibility of debt for pipes that, had they been responsible for at the time, they would have paid to upgrade. And so it makes sense that the debt goes with the upgrades that occurred a few years back. Next, paragraph five deals with a memorandum of understanding that's a part of Exhibit A. In really concise terms, what that memorandum says is, we all know that we continue to work on the costs associated with certifying the levy and doing the upgrades necessary to get the levy certified. Because that is our responsibility now, and because we're actively working with the county in particular to find ways to pay for those costs that we all know will run around $10 million, it's probably, it's definitely not the right time to discuss whether or not to transfer responsibility of the levy over to the authority. Everyone involved agrees to that. But this is basically a statement that says, hey, once that's done, a process long underway and hopefully with the end in sight, once that process is done, then we will continue to discuss whether or not it makes sense for us to operate the levy or to have the authority operate the levy. And in my personal view, I think it will make sense for the authority to operate it once those upgrades are complete, because in many respects, our stormwater system and our levies are one complementary set of tools to protect the citizens of Williamsport. So it's just a statement to say we're going to keep talking about that. Number 10, I think, is very much important. It basically says, if the amendment is approved by both parties, that the authority will comply with all legal requirements, and I interpret that to mean all local, state, and federal legal requirements necessary for the operation of the system. And that ranges from everything from federal permitting down to street permit, street fee, street cut permit fees, and land development plans, which is an issue I'll come back to in a later amendment. I believe that gets me down to indemnification. My current amendment does not reflect what was sent out. I'm going to exclude that paragraph from now. This amendment would not change that paragraph. My next proposal will. And then finally, I believe this is the final one, paragraph 18 of the current proposed amendment, is related to dispute resolution. In lots of listening, I realized that there would be no way, and I think Public Works had already come to this conclusion, but it was a new conclusion for me, that there was no way to list every single task that would be transferred from currently under city's authority to in the future under the authority of, the authority, sorry about that. And so better to have a process for resolving when we couldn't all agree to whose responsibility would be what. And so this paragraph more or less says, the first line will be the staff. And so the administration staff, working with the authority staff, will try to resolve disputes on who's responsible for what. If that doesn't work, then the authorities board, along with the city council, will work to resolve those disputes. And if that doesn't work, then the city council and the authority board will agree on a mutually, will mutually agree upon a consulting engineer who will then resolve who will have responsibility over a specific task. So we have a process in place that makes sense regardless of what the task happens to be. And that describes, I think, in minute detail, the proposals that I have in the current amendment. Remember excluding the indemnification language. Comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith?
I just want to make it perfectly clear that under number four, that should explain very well, this assumption of debt. I don't want the administration to think this is a windfall of money coming into you because the authority may not approve $20 for this. So as it says, "An amount to be determined by further review and agreement." So I just want to make it perfectly clear that they may not approve anything. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's correct. It's basically saying we're going to keep talking about it, that particular part of the language. And in terms of debt service, you know, on what is the remaining amount of even $675,000, and it may very well be less of it, once both sides have been able to do their due diligence, but the debt service on $675,000 is, our finance department may be able to help me do the back-of-the-nap math, but we're probably talking about $35,000, $40,000 annually in debt service, even on that high number? $49,000. But that would be money committed to paying off the debt for those specific facilities, the pipes under the ground. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none. Ms. Frank on the amendment to the transfer resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that amendment is approved. My next amendment is, in further discussion, one of the, the first version that I worked with our solicitor on the indemnification clause, paragraph 16, was fairly standard indemnification language, but maybe not clear to the lay reader. And so thanks to Mr. Smith, both Mr. Smiths, we worked out some language that was maybe a bit clearer. And because this is new for council tonight, let me read my proposed amendment, and then I'll make a motion. amendment, and then I'll make a motion. Indemnification, paragraph 16, indemnification. The authority agrees to indemnify and hold the city harmless for any responsibility or claims arising out of its operations of the stormwater management system after transfer to include costs and fines for permit violations, provided however, the authority will not be responsible for permit violations if they were attributable to the deficiencies in the system that existed before its transfer to the authority and that were not within the responsibility of the authority to address or correct. The parties understand that the present permit holder for the system under the NPDES permit is a city employee. If, I'll make a motion for that amendment if I have a second, then I'll explain it further.
Second.
Hearing a motion, a second. And so the idea here in this language is to say, more or less, if the authority screws something up that we're, continue to be responsible for, because we're ultimately the permit holder, we're ultimately responsible to the federal and state authorities, if the authority screws up in their responsibilities, they will defend us, they will indemnify us, hold us harmless. However, to protect their interests, if we screwed up before we transferred it over to them, then it's our responsibility. It's as simple as that, if I understand indemnification clearly, and I think I do. And so I think that that, again, having listened a lot, especially to concerns raised by the administration, that was, it's an amendment that, you know, if passed tonight, will pass along to the authority and see if they also agree to. So comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on that amendment, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and so that amendment's approved. My third amendment is related to, again, things I very carefully listened to, concerns raised by the administration. And one of those in particular came in clear focus for me today, as I received concerns expressed by our city engineer, our heads of codes, and our head of zoning. And it was related to the process by which land development plans are approved. And so let me refer members of council to paragraph?
Eight.
Eight, thank you. And really here, the concern is whether or not we, the city, as, as the final authority to approve land development plans, should defer any of that authority or just ask for recommendations to the authority on stormwater development, stormwater details related to land development plans. And I think some of their concerns are absolutely right in the way that it was originally written. I believe, though, that we can proceed with the transfer agreement without resolving all of those details, because it's not really key to the transfer agreement that the land development process be resolved right at the moment. And if you consider what effect that our changes that we just made to paragraph 10 were, that if, and my motion is going to be to remove paragraph eight entirely, dealing with land development plan, given that we have number 10 in place, the authority will comply with all legal requirements if they agree to it, including requirements related to land development plan, unless, of course, we agree to something else in the future, a new process in some separate agreement. So my motion to remove the land development plan, paragraph, paragraph eight, then leaves for the future, working out those details. So, so moved.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. I think I've explained that adequately. I want to first ask for comments or questions from members of council, and then I'm going to ask a question of the staff. Hearing none from council, especially for Ms. Halliday and Mr. Girardi. If we leave the current processes in place, that at least temporarily lays your concern of, of being beholden to an authority to hold up the land development and therefore being essentially developer unfriendly by placing that piece, you know, across the street in the authority's hands and not being able to move forward if we are ready to do so, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and it may be that we work out future details, but this gives us some time to do so. Okay. That was an important one, and I thank you and Mr. Nar, both you, both of you and Mr. Nar for bringing up that language to me today. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
If I can ask a question as a follow-up to that, then, is it our intention eventually to transfer land development review to the authority, or are we?
I don't think so. I think that, I think that there is a piece in which they will want to at least review and recommend, make recommendations to the city, because clearly, it's going to be their responsibility to ensure that water and sediment that moves through the city as part of stormwater events is done so in, in a way that's consistent with our permitting requirements, and therefore any new land development should be consistent with what we need to do as a community, city and authority with combined interests. And so I think it's a matter of timing and process more than them having definitive role or no role at all, right? Is that right?
Right. Do you want me to touch on that quickly, or?
Yes, please.
So immediately following this, Joe Girardi and Gary Nar and I will be following up with the land development procedures and working with the authority and coming up with an agreement with, with the land development process so that they are a recommending body for the stormwater management.
Right. And, and no reason to hold up transfer on, on the basis of that, very important, but unrelated detail. Okay?
Yeah, I guess my, my concern is just that obviously they'll need to have some level of say, so I wanted to make sure that we weren't presuming they wouldn't move forward. Good.
Further comments or questions on the amendment related to the land development paragraph, which is to delete it? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on that amendment.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that amendment is also approved. Before I ask for other comments or questions on the resolution as amended, I want to touch base with our solicitor and make sure I've done all of the amendments that contemplated the items that you and I've discussed.
Yes.
Okay. And were there any other issues that were just discussed that I should be aware of?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then let me open it up for comments or questions from members of council. Remember, we're back on the full resolution to transfer now amended thrice. Mr. Smith?
As Dr. Williamson had said, we've been working about three years on this project. And not to belabor the point, but when we looked at what it was going to cost for the city to complete this operation, we estimated anywhere from $5 to $10 million. We do not have any component of this stormwater situation in-house that could be done today, tomorrow, or next week. When we had a discussion with the WSA over this, they agreed to step up and assist us with this. Because when we go back and we look what's in place by the WSA, they have most all the equipment that's required to do this, they have the administrative folks already in place to accomplish this, they have the billing department already in place to accomplish this. When they're working in the street with their own water delivery pipes in the sewer system, why wouldn't it be a natural for them to take over this part of stormwater? What we had to do is, in looking at this, we looked at a cost to benefit ratio, and where is the city going to come up with $5 to $10 million to meet the federal requirements that we are mandated under to do this? And I know there's some folks out there that have said in the last week, well, why don't we take this money and give it to poor people? Why don't we have a poverty program? This is because those statements were made out of lack of knowledge. The federal government, under the EPA, DEA, other organizations, DEP, excuse me, with the state of Pennsylvania, have set these requirements. We don't have a choice in it. And some folks have said, well, let's say we're not going to do this. Okay, so we don't do it. What's going to happen? I can tell you what's going to happen. They've already told us. We will lose a lot of our federal money. And tonight, we talked about CDBG income. Most of the money from River Valley comes from the federal government. They could cut that money if we say we're not going to do this. I went through this a number of years ago with the county, when they were told by EPA that they had to wash all of the exiting garbage trucks from the landfill, because they were putting mud and debris from the garbage that was placed in the landfill. And it was going to cost X number of dollars they came up with. And at first, the commissioner says, we're not going to do this. And EPA says, that's fine, don't do it. We're going to fine you, and we're going to hold you responsible, and you're going to have to pay it, the fines using taxpayer money. And may I remind you that EPA is a federal agency. They have the right to prosecute cities and individuals involved with the city. So they estimated what it was going to cost to do that, and when the bids came in, it was twice that amount, but they didn't have a choice. So we don't have a choice with this MS4 program. And yeah, we could go back and do it ourselves. That would make the city totally irresponsible to the residents and taxpayers of this city to try to duplicate another agency that has all the means and capabilities to perform what is required under EPA requirements. You know, I think we have to, instead of trying to fight and extract money out of these people, we ought to be thankful that somebody stepped up to help us. And when we look at these pipes that are underground, no one knows what condition they're in. Some of these pipes have been in 100 years. The WSA does not know, other than some of the excavations they've made on their own pipes, and have seen some of them are collapsed, they're in terrible condition. So you know what? By charging them, what we're doing is looking at somebody going out and buying a used car and not knowing what condition the used car's in at all. Would anybody do that? I don't think so. If they would, they're throwing their money away. So if we think that these pipes underground are worth millions of dollars, I got a bridge to sell you over on Maynard Street, because that's not the case. We can only estimate what these pipes, the condition are in. How could you sell something that you don't even know what condition it's in? You're buying a pig in a poke. It could be a situation where the estimates are far, far, far lower than what they're actually going to cost to do this. So going back again, if we took it over, and all of a sudden, we estimate $5, $6, $7 million, and we start excavating and find these pipes are totally collapsed, where's the city going to come up with the money? Oh, we're going to get grant money. What happens if we don't get it? Taxpayers are on the hook. The other situation is, if the city did it on their own, all the taxpayers would have to pay for this. There's other folks that generate stormwater besides the taxpayers. And I'm talking about nonprofit organizations, and some of those institutions and so forth are very, very large and generate a lot of stormwater. So now we're spreading this cost, this major cost out, over quite a large number of folks rather than just a few. So does it make sense? You know, I think it does. One of the other things that they have looked at, and by the way, WSA has spent over $300,000 so far of their own money in consultants' fees. One of the things that consultants found is that our pump stations that pump water during times of flooding, we have no generator backup, no power whatsoever. During a flooding event, if we would lose power to just one of those pump stations, we would have major flooding within the Williamsport area. One of the things that they're proposing to do is to have backup power at the, at the pump stations. There's a lot of time and money that has been looked at in this. And the Public Works Committee has done their due diligence and looked at this and said, is this the way to go, or should we do it ourself? Now, there's another caveat looking us in the face. We have to certify a certain amount of compliance by August of 2018. If we keep delaying, delaying, and delaying this, the WSA has told me personally, they cannot meet the deadline of August of 2018 for certain compliances that are required by EPA. So let's say next week, we decide to do this ourself. We haven't started anything to meet compliance. They already have. And the $300,000 has been spent with their consultants. I don't know what the number is of their own staff, of how many hours they put into this. I'm certain it's a lot, a lot. So when you look at this, and after the years that has, we've been working with this, and the due diligence that has been done by both agencies, and there's also another caveat. This council approved with a seven to zero vote, that if we back out of this, we owe the WSA $300,000 plus. We have agreed to that. If they back out, they don't owe us anything. So that's something we have to think about. If we don't go forward with this, then who's going to do it? I guess we are. And now we're looking at $300,000 of taxpayers' money as a penalty to back out. We've got a lot at stake here, and this isn't something that has been thrown together over the last three years. The agreements have been circulated and circulated and circulated, and everyone has had a chance for input. And I think now is the time that we've got to make our decision. But if our decision is to not to go forward with this, then it's coming right back in our laps. And is that what we were charged to do by the taxpayers and residents? So unless somebody else has an answer to that, I would certainly think that this is the route to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Allison?
Yeah, I have a couple of things I want to say in, in relation to this. Perception is important, because perception becomes reality if it's not portrayed correctly. And the perception right now, I think, is that this is totally council-initiated, council-approved, and council's baby. Just for the public to, to remind them, and we accept things because we've been involved in it for, for three, over three years now, and, and we understand things, so we talk in, with that understanding. This, this is all initiated, really, because of the Chesapeake Bay Authority and the mandate that is on Pennsylvania, all of Pennsylvania, to all of Pennsylvania, to meet these regulations. This is, it's important to know that that's the genesis of this, and that hasn't moved. And not only hasn't it changed, well, it has changed. It's become much more regulated and complex, and there are many more potential punishments, financial punishments, that come with it at this point. And there's no way of appeal or backing out of it for us. And we realized that initially when it came in several years ago. And I'm saying, we, the whole entire city government, administration and council, have been working on this from the beginning. It hasn't just been council. I do appreciate the work that Mr. Smith and Mrs. Katz and Mr. Noviel have done on Public Works. But let me say, they didn't do it by themselves. The administration, and especially through John Greto, was present and involved, and in fact, had the lead on most of this. Because John Greto was the engineer, he's the expert. He walked us through this. He helped us get an understanding of these things. And I can only assume that the administration and the mayor's office got regular updates on this and kept themselves informed as to what was going on because of the gravity and the importance of this whole issue, not just to us on council, but the administration as well, and the entire city. So let me say, the MOU that we signed in the very beginning that obligated us to make up the $300,000, that wasn't just, we didn't negotiate that MOU. That was Mr. Greto, working with the Water Authority with full compliance and understanding of the administration. We were all in this together. And I particularly remember the discussions at that time that we were opening up a path that we were not going to be able to divert ourselves from. And that we were, we all knew the potential obligations every step of the way, everybody in this city government. So I want to make that perfectly clear that the reasons these things are being done is because of that. Now, I saved the Williamsport Sun Gazette Sunday edition from October 15. And the headline of this year says, "Another Unfunded Mandate on the Table." And it's talking about the MS4 mandate that we are making plans right now to take care of because of the immediacy, this especially on Williamsport. Because we're the biggest player in the area, and we've been under the microscope more, and we've had to be ahead of the curve. But everybody in the region knew that something, that sooner or later, all the municipalities were going to be involved. Well, the municipalities outside of Williamsport, a lot of them just found out what we've known for three years. And the headline says, "Another Unfunded Mandate on the Table." Official, official quote from one of the municipalities, "Projected Cost Scares the Bejesus Out of Everyone." This is something we've known about for three years. This is something we've diligently worked on. And when I say "we," I mean administration and council. Every step of the way. There's no surprises. There's no backdoor deals. Everybody knew what was on the table. Everybody knew what was coming. Everybody knew the stakes every step of the way. We are at the final end of this long process where we're making decisions tonight to implement the solution for the city of Williamsport. We have to do it, and everyone else is going to have to do something along this nature, in this nature. And make no mistake about it, I don't care what else is said, I don't care what else is brought up. That is the truth. Those are the facts. And we have every piece of written evidence to back that up. And I'm proud of what has been accomplished. I'm proud of John Greto, who's not here tonight. But he did a lot of in-depth work and used all his knowledge and resources to bring us to this place. If he were here tonight, he would agree with that. And the only reason that it's just the six people up here doing this is because the administration has decided not to be involved in the discussion tonight. Normally, there would be somebody standing up at that podium addressing these issues along with us as a team. And that's how government works best, when they work together as a team. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions, members of council? Mrs. Katz?
I would just like to piggyback on what Mr. Allison said about John Greto. Three years ago, I started going to some MS4 meetings with John Greto. And it was really interesting because at that point, they were starting to point out what the requests were turning into requirements. And John is sitting next to me, and he has, we have the sheets. And he's going, "Okay, we've got this one done. Got this one done. We're starting on this one. We're doing this program." And then you looked around the table at all the other townships, and they looked like the deer in the headlights because most of them had no clue of all, what was going to be required of them. And they were really panicking, and that was three years ago. We've, because of John Greto and a great administration, we are far and above ahead of so many other areas in this county. And we should be proud of that fact, that we are continuing this process, that we are not going to be standing here three years from now saying, "Oh, my God, what are we going to do? We don't have the money or the resources to do this." We've been working on it, and we've been working it steadily. And again, it goes back to our administration. And I, we do really have to appreciate what John Greto started to do and what he implemented and continue to do. So I know we all thank him, and Rebecca is following in those footsteps. So we're thankful. We're thankful for our great administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Other comments, Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the amendments that were approved just recently. I know any time that you have something this big come along, there are going to be concerns. There are going to be some hesitation because of the gravity of this. And so I'm pleased with these amendments. I think they take care of many of, most of, if not all of, the concern. Some of them we'll perhaps deal with a little bit later. But I do like these amendments. I think they'll be, it allows us enough flexibility to continue to work on this transition in the future. And I think that's very important to point out. So there's some flexibility built in here. I also wanted to just point out that it's not the city that's paying for this, that's footing the bill, and it's not the authority. But it is the taxpayers and the ratepayers. And so the longer we haggle to try to get more from each other, well, it's very simple for us to do that because we're not paying it. But it is the ratepayers and the taxpayers that are paying for this. And so if, you know, we can do our best to try to get more money in this, in this transfer. But the fact is, the same people that were trying to save a tax hike will also be paying a hike in their rates. And so, you know, it's just not that simple. It is the taxpayers, the ratepayers, that are losing in this situation if we continue to try to squeeze more out. I think it's to our benefit to work together with the authority as a team because we're supposed to be a team, working together for the residents of Williamsport. And so I think we ought to work together as a team and help each other out to take care of this unfunded mandate that we've all been handed and we all have to deal with. So we might as well do it together instead of trying to hurt each other in the process. And so that's my thought on this. And I think this is good going ahead. I think we need to act on it now. And I think it also gives us enough flexibility to do more in the future if we should see that as necessary. So I'm looking forward to supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Let me, if I may, Ms. Mealy, comment just for a second because I want to build for a second because I think my comments build directly on what Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Allison, followed by, I mean, in the exact order of Mrs. Katz and Mr. Henderson said. I agree with everything that was said along the way. The thing I would like to add is, not only has this been a process for three years in which council's been involved, the administration's been actively involved, and I assume communicating internally across individuals throughout that process, but it's also been a very transparent process that has led to a high level of engagement and communication, at least attempts at that, with the taxpayers and the ratepayers, and the business community, and the residents, and the nonprofits, to make sure that, one, we of course met these unfunded mandates that we've been struggling with, two, that we did so in such a way that was fair and affordable to all of those entities. And I think there was a lot of feedback in a lot of meetings that I attended to get external input on making sure that it was a fair and affordable system. And so I heard people talking about it, and they said, "We don't like having to deal with the unfunded mandate, but this one is, this system is fair and affordable as best as we can manage." And then finally, I'd add that not only does it deal with the unfunded mandate, but we found a way to do it fair and affordable and in a way that deals with our own local problems that make it worthwhile to do, even if we didn't have to deal with external mandates coming from Chesapeake Bay and the federal government, et cetera. And just a couple of those problems that we are going to be able to deal with better than we ever have before is, one, we have been only reactive in our ability to afford dealing with an aging and decaying system. We have pipes built out of arches made of bricks, which was the state of the art in 190 something. But not only has the state of the art changed, but I'm guessing, we don't know yet, I'm guessing that some of those great arches of bricks that were built back then are probably not in the condition that they were designed to be 100 and something years later. Or 50 years later, or 75 years later, as the case may be. So as a result, we have water that backs up into some of our streets. So that's going to be a problem that we will be more proactively dealing with than we did currently. Second, in places like Graffius Run and in other places in the community where the system to deal with stormwater events does not function as it was designed, or the design never functioned, we're going to be able to make more progress than we've been able to make going forward on the upgrades to those systems. Of course, the latest news in the paper. We're going to be able to hand over, with Graffius Run and, help me out, Wallace Run and a couple of other places, what we've been working on and made a little bit of progress on, and then hopefully, they'll be able to accelerate it as a next stage. So I think it's really important to know that this, the process of talking this through has involved a lot of transparency, a lot of engagement, and has resulted in a fair system that's as affordable as it can be and not only deals with those unfunded mandates, but with the local problems that maybe we'll make better progress on. So thank you for letting me jump the line, Ms. Mealy.
That's just fine. And I would primarily say amen to all of that, especially to Randy's point, but to everyone's point. But I think those are all valid. And I would further point out that we are fortunate in Williamsport and in the surrounding municipalities to have an exceptionally competent water and sewer authority that manages the business that they manage exceptionally well. One further benefit, currently in transferring stormwater management to our authority as well, we're realizing a slightly fairer division of all of the costs, not just throughout taxpayers, but through all the ratepayers. But secondarily, as our surrounding municipalities realize that they too may not be able to meet their stormwater responsibilities as municipalities, we have the potential to make it even more affordable for all of these municipalities by creating a regional stormwater authority rather than managing it municipality by municipality and duplication of all the efforts and all the equipment that will be required there. Consequently, as often falls to the largest municipality in a region, we are taking the first steps, but we are hoping that as others join us and follow suit, all of us will be able to realize the benefits of working together to resolve these issues that we can't resolve one by one.
Thank you. Any final comments or questions?
Just one more comment. Councilman Novielo could not be with us tonight due to illness. But he did ask me to convey to council, to John Greto, to the Williamsport Municipal Water and Sanitary Authority, his thanks for all of the work that has been done over the three years on this project. He was hoping to be here tonight to convey that himself, but he couldn't be. But he did want everyone to know that he's very grateful for all the work that has been done. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the resolution as amended.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the, as amended. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve an equipment lease agreement. But that has been tabled. To be able to discuss it, we'll need a motion to remove that item from the table.
No move.
Second.
Hear your motion in a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to remove it from the table?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that item's now on the, removed from the table and up for discussion. Let me, since, again, we have no presenter, let me explain a little bit. As I understand it, this is a resolution to, for equipment lease agreement. In particular, the one piece of equipment that is being proposed to be leased from the city to the authority is a 2012 Freightliner jet back truck. And as I understand it, from, again, my listening tour, they have all the jet back trucks that they need. They don't really need this one. And so any proposal that they pay more than what was contemplated, which is a dollar, is not something that they're particularly interested in. And so one thought that I had was simply to say, "Well, let's hold on to it. Maybe we can use it for something else. Leave that up to the administration. Or maybe we can just sell it for cash as we dispose of other surplus equipment, which sort of meets the purpose that was proposed by concerns raised by the administration, but also is perfectly satisfactory to authority who will be able to accomplish their responsibilities, assuming all of this goes through with stormwater, without this particular piece of equipment." And so obviously, we can have further discussion. But my proposal to everyone is to reject this resolution because it's no longer necessary. Oh, comments or questions from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
I think Streets and Parks would be very happy to maintain this piece of equipment so they could possibly sell it for cash to probably get a new street sweeper, which we need desperately. So I think that's where we would like to go with this. At least I would like to see this. This is the route we would like to take and get rid of old Dusty.
There's a smile there.
Perfect. Other comments or questions, Mr. Smith?
There was a question that was brought up better than a year ago, whether this vac truck can be sold if certain amount of state and truck can be sold if certain amount of state and federal money was involved in purchasing it. So before anybody gets too anxious to sell it, that needs to be looked into by our legal people.
Thank you.
It was already checked into. We use liquid fuels money to purchase it, there's a certain way, the money has to go back into the liquid fuels account, I've got all that information at my office, we can sell it, we can trade it in on a sweeper, whatever best suits our needs.
And the solicitor has approved that?
The solicitor referred me to Don Free from Pendott, who controls liquid fuels money, and I've got all the information from him.
Okay.
Thank you for that information, appreciate it. Mr. Smith, any other comments or questions on the resolution to approve equipment lease agreement?
Just one comment. Just thanks to you for going on the listening tour, and working out some of the administration's concerns, and bringing them to an amicable conclusion, so that we can move ahead with the process.
I'm glad we're able to move some of this forward, thank you. Any other comments on the lease agreement? And so again, my thought is, we reject it, because it, we all agree that that's the best outcome at this point. Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Katz?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Allison?
No.
Dr. Williamson?
No, and so the resolution to approve the lease agreement fails. Next item on the agenda is resolution to approve a bill of sale, which is also on the table, so I'll entertain a motion to remove that from the table.
No move.
Second.
Here in motion in a second. I'm going to ask a question to start our process here. As I understand, this is a bill of sale for some particular items, and the bill of sale has an Exhibit A. My version of Exhibit A has nothing on it, but I've seen other versions of Exhibit A that lists a vac truck and a few other items. So I'm not sure exactly what we're selling.
I have a version that you have.
Okay. Do we need an Exhibit A with more detail before we approve selling something?
Well, based on what you decided on the vac truck, at minimum, you would have to amend the exhibit to remove the vac truck from the list.
True.
I don't know about...
But in terms of other items that would be sold?
It would be like concrete forms, catch basin lids, minor stuff. That's all we have for the stormwater issue, some piping that's left over. I can give you a list next week. I think the way to do it would be to approve the document, if you understand that it may have a vac, or then then have to revise it.
So the version I have actually doesn't list the vac truck, but I'm, and so, does anyone in council's packets have a version that lists anything related to that truck? Mr. Henderson?
There is, it mentions any vac truck under point number three. It doesn't mention a specific, but it says, "Obtaining title documents for any vac trucks, for which title documents have been lost or destroyed." Would that need to be amended? Do you see that?
Yeah.
President Williamson, now that you have passed the transfer agreement, this is an ancillary agreement to the transfer agreement that would be more necessary at the time of closing, which will happen sometime in the near future. We could continue to table this, subject to further due diligence, at which point in time we could approve it.
And so if we, we've removed it from the table, so we'll need a new motion to table it, which will look great in the minutes. But if we do do that, if we table it again this evening, can I ask that you work with Streets and Parks to be able to come up with a list, so that it is prepared for closing? Before I ask for a motion to table, then, are there other comments or thoughts? Then?
Did I not?
Yes, I thought we did.
Did we, we had a vote? No, we didn't? No? Oh, good, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris Roberts rules.
So do I hear a motion to remove this from the table? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Wasn't there a motion in a second?
Oh, there was a motion in a second. Whoever made the motion, will you remove your motion?
Yes.
Whoever made the second, will you remove your second? Okay, there we go. Wow. Roomful of people that know parliamentary procedure, it's pretty impressive. It's hard to find. All right, so now we move on to the next item. So we're down to the fourth item that was on the table, with only one that we skipped over tonight. Resolution of the City of Williamsport concurring with the Declaration of Taking. Is there a motion to remove that from the table?
No move.
Second.
Here in motion in a second. Now, as I understand it, there were concerns, in my listening tour, there were concerns about this being the mechanism for transferring these assets from the control of the city to the control of the authority. I consulted with our solicitor, who consulted with our other solicitor, on that as the mechanism for the process, and so I'd like to have Mr. Smith explain in broad strokes, at least, why this is the mechanism that makes the most sense, even if some people have concerns about what it is that the taking clause of all of this might represent.
I think the essential concern, as I understood it, was that by law, an authority does not have the ability to condemn property of a municipality. It can certainly do that if the municipality agrees to the taking, and the reason for this agreement is, although you could also do it by deed theoretically, the complexities of getting identifying information for the multiple parcels that are going to be transferred would be an incredible burden and unnecessary. The concern was, the precedential effect of agreeing to a condemnation, from a legal perspective, this is a one-off, it's not any precedent, it's not going to happen again except in appropriate circumstances, so I do not have an issue with the mechanism, particularly because it saves the burden.
And if I understood some of the concerns as well, there was concerns that by giving them this declaration, concurring with the Declaration of Taking, then in some way, the authority could essentially take any asset of the city. I didn't quite understand what that point was, but...
That was the precedential effect, and there is no precedential effect if we don't agree in future circumstances.
So the authority will not be able to take city hall away from city government?
That's correct.
And the authority will not be able to take a city street without paying fees that would allow them to cut and access their pipes?
Also correct.
And so, it is limited in this one case to these...
Very specific...
Pipes that are under the ground that transfer stormwater from the city into either the sanitary system or to the river.
That's correct.
Or fail to transfer it at all.
Well, in an ideal situation, that's what they do. Okay, so that's now been reviewed, reviewed again, and reviewed at least for a third time by various entities, and it seems like the most straightforward, and yet still limited mechanism for making this transfer. So that allays any concerns then that I have. Comments or questions from members of council? Ms. Smith?
All those documents, by the way, exist. I don't know, probably a hundred, hundred and fifty pages here that comprises five percent of what's going to be transferred. And I thought, "I'm not going to print out anymore and waste the paper." So it's fully documented exactly what's going to be transferred, by diagram, by wording, by description.
And basically, those are mostly descriptions of segments of pipe underground?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this resolution related to the Declaration of Taking? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and let me make sure that I did the process correctly. We did have a vote to remove that item from the table?
Yes.
And that was the vote on final passage?
Yes, we did.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to authorize execution of one more agreement, is that really the title, between the City of Williamsport and the Williamsport Sanitary Authority? Is there a motion to consider this resolution? Giving extra time, in case I didn't hear a motion from my members of council. No motion or second? And I'm sure we'll be discussing that a bit more later, but the motion, the resolution fails to be considered for lack of a motion. Next item on the agenda, then, is a resolution to approve an agreement between, among the City of Williamsport, the Williamsport Redevelopment Authority, P&amp;L Investments, and Terra Technical Services LLC. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Second.
Here in motion in a second. Mrs. Young?
Hello again. The original developers' agreement for this project was executed in 2013 between the city, the redevelopment authority, Greater Like-Homing Habitat for Humanity, and P&amp;L Investments for the development of housing at the former Broad Arts site. Phase one of this project was for the construction of forty affordable rental housing units, now memorial homes, which was completed in 2014. Also part of phase one was Habitat's construction of two single-family affordable homes on this site. The construction of one single-family affordable home has been completed, and the construction of the second home is underway. Phase two of the project was for the construction of thirty-two market-rate rental housing units on the remaining parcel, and also on the half-acre parking lot across Oliver Street. P&amp;L Investments was supposed to develop the market-rate rental housing units on these parcels within thirty-six months from the execution of the developers' agreement. This did not occur, and the city notified P&amp;L Investments that the developers' agreement had expired. Since the property had never been conveyed, P&amp;L Investments did not agree that the developers' agreement had expired, but did offer to relinquish its rights or interest in developing the remaining memorial homes parcel if the parking lot was conveyed to it. P&amp;L Investments had originally requested that the zoning of the parking lot parcel be changed from residential RU to commercial, and that any tap-on fees be waived. The city refused to agree to those terms. The city did negotiate with P&amp;L Investments and prepared this agreement that conveys the half-acre parking lot to P&amp;L Investments for the purchase price of $1. The redevelopment authority will retain ownership of the remainder of the memorial homes parcel for future development. I did confirm with the zoning officer that city council would have to approve any type, at all, any type of commercial development on the conveyed parcel. The redevelopment authority did approve this agreement on October 25th, and this agreement was also reviewed by the finance committee.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy, finance?
Finance did review this item and forward it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. While we would have preferred to have the housing on-site, this seems like the best outcome, given that that wasn't feasible, and that we may still manage to make it feasible through the auspices of the redevelopment authority. We did have a bit of a discussion on the precise uses allowed within an RU district that hopefully we'll obtain a little more clarification about that, perhaps in finance or as council people. I have been under the impression that certain of the uses contemplated of the parking lot would have been allowed under RU, but apparently are not, so. But all of that said, certainly we hope that P&amp;L can make a go of some sort of something on the parking lot, and now the city retains the ownership of the other parcel, which we will hopefully manage to turn into housing here as we proceed.
Other comments or questions? I just want to add my thanks to you, Ms. Young, Mr. Grado, I worked closely with both of you, as well as Kim Wheeler from the county, and Norm Lubin, our solicitor, to get to this point, and I think maybe regain some of the momentum that we had at the completion of phase one of the project. We are, I think, all very excited of what we've achieved so far in that area, and to quickly list those, all of the investments in Memorial Park, the investments in the surrounding neighborhood, in both its infrastructure, and in the owner-occupied and rental housing in that area, in partnership with STEP as well, the partnership with P&amp;L Investments and Arbor Housing on the affordable housing units, partnership with Habitat for Humanity on one and soon two owner-occupied homes. And so the missing piece that goes all the way back to the work that the county did in terms of housing needs in, I believe it was 2012, both in the city and the broader county, was to focus on the needs of three groups. One, affordable housing, we've accomplished that. Two, on housing for senior citizens in our community, and remember, the original project not only had this component, but also the Grove Street Commons on the other side, and some of the senior citizens that continue to own their homes in that neighborhood, and the investment that we were able to leverage for them. And phase two is, in part, designed for senior citizens' needs as well, so what was, has always been contemplated and continues to be contemplated on the part we now have clear control over again, is a series in some form or another, and we will have to work out the details again, of owner-occupied market-rate housing along this area on Scott Street, thank you. And in particular, for a senior citizen who's looking to downsize, maybe get out of mowing a little bit, maybe get a first-floor bedroom, that's going to be a good option for them. The final thing that was identified in that 2012 housing impact study done by the county was the need for young, housing for young families and young professionals in our community. And those same townhouses, or whatever comes next, that would, might be good for senior citizens, could also be good for young families and young professionals. And so I'm excited to get to this point again, to regain the momentum that we had a few years back, to be able to complete that vision for townhomes, especially for affordable market-rate townhomes that, I'm sorry, owner-occupied market-rate townhomes to meet the needs, especially for the seniors in the community, young families and young professionals in our community as well. So thank you for helping us get to this point.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next resolution, the next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve with AMAC. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution to approve work with the AMAC Foster Wheeler with coordination from the City of Williamsport on plans preparation for relief well replacement and rehabilitation on northeast and northwest Williamsport levee system.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion in a second on this resolution?
No move.
Second.
Here in motion in a second, Ms. Halliday. I'll read this.
Good evening, council, mayor, and administration. The senior before you is a resolution authorizing a proposal with AMAC Foster Wheeler, Environmental and Infrastructure Incorporated, and the City of Williamsport for engineering services necessary to complete the, sorry, to complete the plans for the northeast and northwest Williamsport levee system. Relief well, on my agenda, it says relief "we."
That could be more fun.
Rehabilitation and replacement.
That could be more fun.
Sorry. These engineering services will include preparing plans, specifications for rehabilitating and replacing the deficient relief wells along the levee system. This will also include the bid phase and construction phase services. The purpose of this proposal is to allow the city to maintain eligibility for the Army Corps assistance in acquiring our FEMA certification. The rehabilitation replacement process will include twenty-four relief wells to be rehabilitated and sixteen wells to be replaced. The amount for this, for these engineering services is to not exceed one thousand, or sorry, one hundred thousand forty-seven, one thou, one four seven seven five zero. I think we went over this in finance. I think we went over this in finance at one point. And this has been reviewed by finance committee.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy from finance?
Finance did review this and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. The funding for the engineering services will be coming from Act 13 funding. The one important element of our discussion was that the funding for the actual construction work on the relief wells doesn't exist yet. That said, it is important that we continue to move forward with elements related to the levee so that the, the Army Corps knows that we are committed to making the, the amendments that we need to make to fixing the levee in the future. So this is a small and relatively speaking inexpensive step that we can afford to take and then we are pursuing funding for the actual construction on the relief wells. The one important thing to notice about the, the contract with AMAC is that it is open-ended in terms of timing. That is to say that if they do the engineering and then it takes us a couple of years to get the funding for the actual construction, they are still on top to come in and oversee construction and certify the final wells. We will not, say, lose the investment or anything like that because we have, because we, we don't have the funding in place for the construction portion of this contract yet. But hopefully we will shortly. So, as I said, finance forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Ellis?
Speaking of the dollars, at the bottom of the first page, the budgetary estimate for the levee, cross-pipe, relief well rehabilitation, which is the part we're talking about tonight, the I-Wall free board corrective is, that's the $10 million total figure. Out of that $10 million, the relief well rehab that is going to be looked at in this contract, the estimate that Rebecca Halliday gave us was about 1.25 million construction for that, out of that $10 million for those relief wells. It looks like the biggest piece of money goes to the cross-pipes for 4.8 million estimated. So.
That's the.
Yeah. But that, that, I won't say anything more about what may happen with that 4.8 million, but.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mrs. Smith?
Mr. Grado and I, when we started working on this project in the public works committee, he and I had projected a total cost of around $5 million. And as time went on, we upped that to seven and a half and then eight or nine and now $10 million. So it's, it's about coming to those numbers. I have been asked over several months to explain to some of the citizens what these relief wells are. And a good example is if you will go up in Bowman Field on the west side of the parking lot, or if you go over in Elm Park, you will see these black painted devices that come out of the ground at certain distances apart. And they're probably about eighteen inches in diameter and probably about twelve, fifteen inches in height. And what the purpose of those relief wells are, that when flooding starts, what you have is an enormous pressure of water on the water side of the levee. And that water will start seeping through the bottom and they call that boiling is what they refer that to. That water has to go someplace. So what it does, it comes out of those relief wells and floods that entire area. It serves to keep the levee from being undermined and eroding away at the bottom. And it also relieves some of the pressure on the other side of the levee because when you have that enormous volume of water on the water side, what happens when you're pushing against a wall and there's nothing on the other side, you stand a good chance of collapse. If any of you remember back in the 1972 flood of Agnes, I at the time was an engineer at WRAK radio station and the relief wells were working. The water came at the Market Street Bridge within eighteen inches of going over the levee. So you can imagine what that level was along the levee. The relief wells worked at that time. It filled Elm Park with a huge amount of water. You could have put a motorboat in there and gone up and down in that water. In WRAK's building, which was instrumental in staying on the air in the 1936 flood, which gave all of the residents of the entire area, they were doing personal messages of where families were, whether they were safe, where they relocated to. And it was interesting because at that time, the decision was made to stay in that building and stay on the air to give all the information for the flooding conditions to the public. Well, in order to do that, in the basement of that building, there is a dry well. And at one time, we had three pumps running and we were pumping around 1,900 gallons of water a minute that was coming in and we pumped that out a window and the water, of course, would come right back in. The station was kept dry during that entire period of time and stayed on the air. We did have to sandbag the back doors to keep the door from coming in. And the station stayed on and was able to give flooding information to the residents of the city while other radio stations had to go off the air. And the one over in south side was flooded up to the chimney, which was in the park area over there at the time. So these relief wells are valuable. And if there's another flood like that, you're going to see those areas where those black pieces of equipment come out of the ground and let that water come and flood that area. So that is a protection device that is used. We did find that through the surveys that, when they did the surveying of them, that they were able to clean some of them out and some of them had a large amount of sediment in them and they were able to pump that sediment out. Some of them were so filled full of sediment they couldn't do that. Some were also damaged. So in that process, the list was compiled, how many of these were defective, how many could have been, could have been and were cleaned out, and how many of them need replacement. So that's what the purpose of these relief wells are. They're an integral part of the flood protection system and the money has to be spent in order to, to keep these in the condition that they should be in. And through no fault of previous employees of the city, the money wasn't there. It just wasn't done. And it's the same thing with stormwater pipes underground. Things that are underground, you tend to ignore and pretend that they don't exist. But they do exist and there wasn't money put in over the years to maintain those pipes. And the same thing with the relief wells. They could be looked at, but until they did a complete survey, we didn't know what condition they were in. So this is the beginning part. After all the years it's been spent on this project, we're now starting to get some numbers. And once these engineering documents are drawn up, it can be put out for an RFP and we can find out exactly how much money we're talking about and how well AMAC is predicting the costs. So let's hope that we can stay within the $10 million as we go forward with this. But I just wanted to share with you as a reminder of what these relief wells are and the importance of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution to approve the AMAC contract is approved. The next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for 328 Academy Street. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this?
So move.
Second?
Here a motion and a second, Mr. Gerardi?
Yes. Good evening, Dr. Williamson, members of council and the administration. Before I go ahead, I'd wanted to say, I have to say, no one can ever say council shows favoritism. Mr. Marty, a former council member, had to sit through a two-hour meeting to go to a certificate of appropriateness, which is unusual, so.
That's because we know him so.
Is that what it is?
As we know him, after we met him, sit.
I thought you wanted to just make him go in home so he sits.
Well, he needs to get used to coming back to the building now that he's going to be a commissioner.
What you have before you is a certificate of appropriateness request to construct a third-floor dormer area, mezzanine, carport, fencing, and miscellaneous metalwork. Owner is to install a metal roof with new aluminum clad windows and colors and style as shown on the attached drawings. I attached two drawings. One's a rendering showing the colors of the building and the other one is actually a architectural elevation view. And if you have any questions of myself or Mr. Marty, either one of us will be more than happy to help or answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Comments or question from members of council? Ms. Mealy?
Just, just a quick question. I'm thinking of the Wright House. This is sort of behind the old, behind a property currently owned by Deb Cockens and John Vogel on that side of the street.
If I correct, that's it.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
It's on the corner of the alley and.
And it's sort of just an updating of, of a number of structures that are already there, right, with the, with the dormer added and.
Correct.
It looks like it'll be a very nice amendment to the existing structure. So thank you very much, Mr. Marty.
Other comments or questions? I'd also add that, you know, we're, maybe, maybe we can add this to what will hopefully be a growing list of private investment in the Old City Gateway Project development, which of course was part of the idea from the very beginning, was to use that process to spark private investment in that area. And so we should thank Mr. Marty and Black Horse Holdings for being a part of that overall effort as well. If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the certificate?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the certificate is approved. I'm going to deviate a bit here from the agenda for a second, which is part of the reason I wasn't in a hurry to change it around earlier. There has been a request to add an item to the agenda and the mechanism, as I've consulted with others, for doing that typically would be requiring a suspension of the rules. And I suppose the easiest way to explain why I'm going to ask for a motion to suspend the rules is to explain what would follow. There is a pending private transfer of a property at 135 West Third Street, which most of us will know as the Barrel 135 Building, between one private entity, I believe it's Temple Bar LLC, and another private entity, which I see as Gramercy 135 LLC. Why does this all involve us? If members of council will recall, there is an easement agreement between the City of Williamsport and Temple Bar LLC related to the restaurant there putting outdoor seating in that area that's the space between the privately held building and the city-owned parking deck. And unlike most of those agreements, from what I understand, they would have an assignment clause that would allow the owner of the building to reassign that easement agreement to a new owner with the building with sale. For whatever reason, there's not an assignment clause in the easement agreement. And so it was requested that we approve reassigning it to what will be the new owner. Now, here's the timing issue because normally I wouldn't entertain the notion of changing the agenda at the last minute through suspension of the rules. Apparently, the closing has been scheduled for some time for a couple of weeks, no, less than two weeks from now, i.e. next, less time than our next meeting. And the issue about the assignment clause was only discovered Friday or early this week or something along those lines after the agenda was assembled. And so because it has no tangible effect whatsoever to the city, but we must agree to it, I thought I would leave it to council with that explanation on whether or not to make a motion to suspend the rules and then consider this resolution to assign an existing right-of-way agreement to a new owner. So I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to suspend rules.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and so then I will entertain, now that the rules are suspended, next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the execution of assignment of right-of-way agreement between the City of Williamsport and Temple Bar LLC. Do we need to read this in its entirety into the record? As I said, and all members of council have a copy of this before them, right? In short explanation, basically, it assigns the same rights to that outdoor seating to the company once that closing occurs. If for some reason the deal falls through, then Temple Bar LLC would retain the right-of-way easement. Comments or questions from members of council? Ms. Mealy?
Not obviously that we're anticipating the property changing hands again anytime in the near future, but I have not fully reviewed this item simply because we sort of received it this evening. Does this, this only permits basically the extension of the, the reassignment to Gramercy 135 LLC? This does not create an ongoing reassignment if the property were to change hands again.
Yes, absolutely. All it is, is saying the new owner has the same rights and responsibilities as the former.
It was not requested to make a blanket assignment and that wa, you know.
Okay.
That, I would imagine that that could be requested and, and we probably, I mean, it's a different discussion, we might have that conversation, but this request and this resolution does not do that.
Yeah, I would certainly be willing to consider that, just curious to know what we were precisely.
It's a good question, thank you.
Okay.
Other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on, did I get the motion in a second? Can I have a motion? I did.
So move.
Can I then get the vote on the resolution authorizing execution of assignment?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and, and the resolution is approved. And that was relatively easy then. Next item on the agenda, if I've followed my way down the list here, is except for filing. We have the public works meeting minutes of August 1st, 2017, controllers report of September 2017, and the Water and Sanitary Authority minutes for September 27th, 2017. Can I have a motion and a second to accept these for filing?
So move.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are accepted. Next item on the agenda is announcements. I need to announce that this evening council had an executive session for the purpose of negotiation immediately prior to their regularly scheduled meeting. Other announcements are that the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, note Tuesday, on November 21st at 7:30 PM here in council chambers so that we can on Thursday eat us some turkey. Other upcoming meetings are Monday, November 13th at noon, the planning commission meeting at 4:00 PM, the recreation commission. On Tuesday, November 14th at 6:30 PM is Harb and at 7:00 PM is Citizen Corps Council. On Wednesday, November 15th at 11:30 PM is the redevelopment authority. Thursday, November 16th at 10:30 AM is the zoning hearing board. At 4:00 PM is the board of health. And there's also a pilot drive at 1:00 PM. On Tuesday, November 21st at 10:00 AM is the board of health again.
Mistake.
I'm sorry. That, that one is not going to happen then. So at noon is public works, at 3:30 PM is finance, and at 4:00 PM is Brandon Park and Shade Tree Commissions. That brings us to the end of our agenda, which then I'll recognize members of council for additional comments. Mr. Smith?
Referring back just for a moment to resolution number 15 tonight that. Referring back just for a moment to resolution number 15 tonight that failed. As part of that resolution, we received some paperwork from a law firm called McNeese Wallace in Newark. And I'd like to ask the mayor, who authorized hiring of this law firm?
The mayor asked me to review the documents the council was considering for the actions you took tonight, and to do a due diligence review. Our attorney, that attorney we use for our construction projects, and since those construction projects involved investment in storm sewer improvements, I sent the documents to an attorney there that we deal with for a due diligence review, and she returned a letter with, I think, a lot of good comments, which I think were considered as part of the amendments to the original documents. So I'll take responsibility for that because of our, part of that, this whole transfer.
How was that paid for, that law firm?
I haven't received a bill. I don't know if she's going to bill us or not, but RVT would be responsible. I want to have something on record so that, you know, when we use federal state funds for those improvements, that I'm doing everything that I need to do.
Why did we not use our solicitors that both of those people are paid over $60,000?
Because they had the expertise to give me the advice I need.
So you're saying our solicitors don't have that expertise?
They did not offer comments on what McNeese did. No, I didn't get those comments from our solic- our solicitor reviewed the documents and did not offer any comments.
What line item is this going to come under?
Our litigation line item.
Don't you think that should have been brought to city council for approval before that was done?
No.
Why not?
Well, it's not, there was no agreement. There's not, no contract.
So how much is...
We do this, I mean, they do that all the, I mean...
Yeah, you do it all the time. That's what I'm questioning. That's right.
Yeah, when you have, issue of purchase order, something like that, yeah. I mean, when we buy pens or pencils, we don't come...
I certainly don't think taxpayers' money, when we're paying solicitors to do this work.
Well, again, our solicitor didn't offer any comments relative to what you have before you.
Were you asked, Jay David, were you asked to perform any of this work?
I was not, as...
Do you know if...
President Williamson mentioned, I have been working with the Williamsport Sanitary Authority as well as council through various comments, and I've been part of the listening tour.
I don't know. Some of these things indicate in here that it's almost like River Valley doesn't agree with some of these things that we have been doing.
That is not how you, I read the letter. I'm glad to read it. Those, again, a lot of those comments in that letter have been part of the amendments we made to the documents.
It's almost like you're litigating against the city.
No, I'm asking, the mayor asked me to do a review, and I'm doing my due diligence to make sure that, that we're covered in terms of our investments.
I still think it should have been brought to city council. There's more things that should be brought to city council that aren't, Mr. Nichols.
Okay.
And I think in the future, we're going to closely check that. Thank you.
That's fine. Just, for any comments, we'll consider it. Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Mealy?
Actually, I just had a very minor note that what did not appear in the upcoming meetings list is a special finance meeting next Wednesday at 3:00 PM. So it's been advertised, I believe, and we're all above the board, but I wanted to make sure we mentioned it as well here.
Thank you very much. Other comments from members of council? To build on something I said earlier about, again, resolution that was number 15 that was not brought up, in essence, by agreeing to the transfer, by taking the transfer agreement off the table and approving, amending and improving, I think it made that motion moot. We had all the discussions about substance that might have come up during that time anyway, and so there was no need to have what in essence was a replacement that, as I, as I read it, would have started the process over rather than completed the process. And so given that it was moot, it was one reason I didn't myself make a motion to consider. Any other comments from members of council? Hearing none, Mr. Mayor, you or your administration?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to announce that Chris Cooley will be joining our team very soon as the city's new IT coordinator. I'm impressed with Chris's IT knowledge. He's familiar with Robert's Rules, as we saw tonight. He's a city resident, and I'm sure he will do a great job. Thank you.
Welcome to the city. It seems less appropriate than normal when we say that, but congratulations. And I'm sure, speak for council, I say we look forward to working with you in this new capacity. Is that everything, Mr. Mayor? Everything? Okay. Are there any comments from the general public? Please come forward, state your name and address, as you said, as we always do, in three minutes, if you would.
Thank you, Dr. Williamson. Ralph Keller, 203 U Street. On a lighter note, I would like to make a comment about the upcoming holidays. The city's preparing, the lights are up downtown, the parks are being made ready, a lot of events coming up. There's one thing our train people do that is often overlooked. We're putting on a wonderful family display, which will be next weekend, the 18th and 19th, the Toy Train Expo. We've been doing this for over 20 years. It will be at the Old Park Home, now the Park Place, also displays at the Tabor Museum. We've been doing this a long time, and this is a group of just hobbyists. They get together, we get nothing out of it. We put it on as our gift to the community, if you will. And this is not a show, or, sorry, not a sale, not a flea market. We hobbyists bring our personal trains down, and we'll have running train layouts all weekend. So children of all ages are invited to come up, and it's also the same day they're having the Victorian Homes Tour, which leaves from the gazebo there. So if you come up to see that, stop in and see us, we love, we've had 2,000 people there already in the weekend. We'd like to break that record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. And appreciate that you and your colleagues put that on. I want to quibble with you one thing. You said you don't get anything out of it. Yes, you do.
Enjoyment.
Enjoyment. And, and so, so will all the visitors that you bring in. Yeah, absolutely, of course. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Miller?
Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street. Good evening, council president and other council members. Two things I noticed on Tuesday's election. One, the two questions, looks like the city residents want to change the government. That's y'all. Hmm. And I also learned that alls I got to do is get like, what, 300 signatures, and I can put something on the ballot? Y'all know me. I've brought 300 signatures to this council before about shared in elementary, and because I didn't know that they had to be registered voters, but now I know. Watch out. I've been talking about this sewer authority transferring our storm drains. To me, the city should have taken care of this long ago. The storm drain system, it sounds like the city didn't want to do its job. Where's the authority going to come up with this $5 to $10 million from the citizens and property owners? So I think y'all are sharking your duty, because y'all are in a popularity contrast. Lord forbid you have to raise taxes or put a fee onto people's property, you know, because, you know, y'all want to be popular. You don't want to have to do that. Well, they're going to come up with the money somehow, so it's one of those backdoor taxes to me. And I thought, you know, contracting out, but Mr. Skip's apt comments about it's just too damn late. Oh, well. But the city has known for three years, how much money has the city put aside for this? Please, answer. You know, if you knew for three years that you were going to have to do this, besides the 100 years that you personally said some of these pipes have been in the ground, how long did you expect them to last? I have a 25-year roof on my house, and at year 20, I will be putting substantial money away to replace the roof, because I know I'll have five, maybe 10 years in. So, you know, has the city, not just y'all, but for 100 years, been putting money aside? Doesn't sound like y'all have. And then I also want to point out that the Sewer and Water Authority, I'm not sure exactly who, over at Wyoming and Almond Street some years ago, when replacing one of their pipes, cut through a storm drain, took it out. Did they replace it? No. Water shot up out one storm drain, across the street and down the other storm drain. And we, the city taxpayers, paid to fix their boo-boo. And now you're going to have the fox in charge of the hen house? So how do I know that they're not going to make mess-ups like that and then bill me for their mess-ups? You know? That, that just makes no sense to me. Are we going to have a body that overlooks them and makes sure that they're doing this properly and that they pay out of their Water Authority and Sewer Authority bill, which I get? Are they going to be paying for their stuff and the fee that they add on to my water and sewer bill? You know? I mean, I realize it's all just one bill, but, you know, y'all have line items and all your stuff to know exactly what's going to what and for what and why what. I think we should get the same thing. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments from the general public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.